We have people. I see Elizabeth's got some people up there.
Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm president of the city council. And before we have our meeting this morning, we are going to recognize a young woman who's a visitor to our city and is part of our Tours Sister City relationship. And I would just mention Minneapolis has, oh my goodness, 10 sister cities? 10 sister cities. And I've been on the council for 17 years. And when I came on the council, a number of those relationships which in the United States of America are recognized by government, but then not sponsored by government. They need to be a group of volunteers that have an association that supports the work of the Sister City relationship. And we have had a number of our sister cities really take off and have very, very helpful volunteer associations that do the networking that allow us to visit them, them to visit us, and then exchanges both in the cultural area, educational areas, and then also some of our business areas. So we really have benefited so much from our Sister City relationships across the world. And we're really pleased this morning.
Item number two, probably would otherwise pass without notice, but this is a small tweak to our textile donation collection bin ordinance, and we are joined today by one of the stakeholders who will look to probably be placing some new bins in their lobby, so I just wanted to say thank you for working with our staff on what I think is an improvement to the process here. And that's it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk call the role, excuse me, on items one, two, and then four through 11 on the report.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Frey.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. On item three, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to move approval of item number three and note that there are two portions to it. One portion amends the Chapter 341 related to taxi cabs, and the second portion of it adds a new Chapter 343 related to transportation network companies. And with that, I'll defer to the authors to speak.
Councilmember Goodman has moved item three, which has two parts. Any discussion or any comment from the authors? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This has been really an extraordinary process, I think. There are several people I first off want to thank for all of their work. Councilmember Abdi Worsami has been a tremendous partner through the entire process. As you know, he handled, for the most part, the taxi half of the ordinance, and I handled the TNC half. Grant Wilson, the head of REG Services, has dealt with complaints, concerns. He's gotten praise as well as a whole lot of criticism. And I think, you know, the job that our staff does on every single one of these ordinance is impressive. They usually don't get the credit that they deserve, and I hope that that isn't the case in this instance. I'd like to thank Councilmember Glidden for all the work that she did collaborating between the city of St. Paul with the airports, city of Minneapolis, and Councilmember Goodman for being here notwithstanding the fact that she's not feeling very well today. This was a major effort, and this is in every way what progress looks like. We, as a city, could wait for other cities to just take the lead and follow and edit copy over their ordinance. But Minneapolis, Minneapolis doesn't follow along. Minneapolis deserves to lead. If we're going to be a first-class city, that's the direction that we need to take. And I'm really proud to say that I think we're doing it in this instance. We can't, you know, skate to where the puck is. We've got to skate to where it's going to be, and we can't be afraid of progress. And I think this ordinance takes some excellent steps towards adding to the cornucopia of transportation options that we have. It enables people to move away from the automobile-centric mentality, to feel comfortable not being behind the wheel themselves, and to ultimately abandon their car. That's the direction that we need to go as a city, and I'm proud to say that I think that's the direction that this ordinance needs to take. And although, you know, there has been pushback, you always get pushback when you're trying to have progress. I also want to thank both the TNC companies and everybody involved with it as well, and you may be surprised by this, but the taxi cab industry. They've been aggressive advocates, and I think that's exactly what you need in coming to the best possible ordinance. And this is a very, very good ordinance. We will also be in the process of reviewing that ordinance in approximately one year, and I'm directing staff to do so. You know, there may be obvious improvements that can be made. There may be changes that are necessary, and that will be an excellent time to review. And finally, I would like to thank my aide, Heidi Ritchie, who is, she's done a tremendous job through the whole process, and she knows that ordinance like the back of her hand. So I'm proud to vote yes here.
Councilmember Worsami. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to say a few words, or maybe a lot of words, with regards to this, and this is with all due respect to the authors, Councilmembers Frye and Worsami. I do have concerns with these ordinances. The passage of the ordinances will mean that delivery industry will be changed forever, and I can say I'm not afraid of progress. However, I'm not sure we understand what the unintended consequences will be, and at the heart of these changes, I would just like to see that there is fairness and a level playing field, compliance with existing federal, state, and local laws, and increase accessibility for all residents in Minneapolis. From my reading of the ordinances and comparing them, I believe that there is cause for concern. And I'm going to quote a few things from the RCA. One of the sentences from the RCA reads, "The concept of this model ordinance is to provide the least amount of regulation for the industry while ensuring that public health and safety interests of the community are met." And I think we're doing the least amount of regulation for one area, the TNCs, while not doing the same for taxis. I know that there have been some concessions, but I don't know if they go enough to make it level. The second sentence that reads from the RCA is, "The fluctuating fares and fees," or "With fluctuating fares and fees, riders are transported to their requested destination." And the key terms there for me are fluctuating fares and fees, and that's a lot for the TNCs, but not the cabs. The third thing that just caught my attention was from the RCA, "Cities and states across the country are being forced to take action to regulate the transportation network companies as they have chosen to intramarkets, including the Minneapolis market, without authority and have launched operations in violation of established laws that regulate small vehicles for higher transportation services." And so with regards to the fairness and leveling the playing field piece, I mean, the story is Lyft and Uber X came to town. They are currently operating unlawfully, and basically, you know, it seems like we're saying, "That's fine, we'll make laws to favor you." And that, there's something wrong about that, and I'll say that with regard to this. I mean, if we do that, I mean, we're setting precedent for the future for making accommodations for certain folks who violate the laws or who are unlawful. And I'm perplexed as to why we haven't addressed that piece. And additionally, I want to say this, that 343.50 enumerates the qualifications for a TNC, and it requires that the applicant shall be in compliance with all applicable city, state, and federal laws upon initial application. Well, in this situation, since the TNCs are currently operating unlawfully, doesn't that disqualify them from getting a license from the start? So that's one. Two, the fee structures for TNCs are different from the fee structures for taxis, and the TNCs can have fluctuating fares while taxis set fares and fees, or taxis have set fares and fees. The third issue is that TNCs are charged with one license per company while taxis are charged with license fees for every driver, vehicle, and company. The TNCs will pay $35,000 per company, and there's no cap on the number of vehicles or drivers. Essentially, the aggregate industry licensing fee for taxis is at least twice as much as that of the $70,000 for the two TNCs. You know, and one of the things that I will go into really is just, you know, implicitly in requiring taxis to be, or in this situation, I mean, implicit is this requirement that taxis have to be wheelchair-accessible, while I don't think we have the same expectations for TNCs. And I think the hard part for me is that we will maybe cause a situation where we're not going to be in compliance with being wheelchair-accessible. And, you know, when I look at the wheelchair surcharge, it won't ensure that equitable numbers of wheelchair-accessible taxi cabs are available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The incentives offered won't be enough to make it worthwhile of taxi cabs. And, you know, I mentioned this earlier, but I mean, by the way, why are only taxis burdened with the responsibility of having to be ADA accessible? You know, and my fear is that our city will be one of the only cities in the country to not offer wheelchair-accessible taxi cabs because of this system. And, you know, if this happens, I guess my fear is that the onus will be on us to subsidize in the taxi cab industry to be in compliance with the ADA. And, you know, I think the last part that I want to mention, and it's important for me because I represent Ward Five, is that, you know, lost in the discussion of this is the impact that these changes will have on low-income people who rely on this type of transportation. What happens to people who don't have smartphones, who need assistance, who have disabilities, who live in high-crime areas? The promise of more transportation options sounds a bit too good to be true, especially with fares for both TNCs and taxis being jacked up essentially. And, you know, in this case, not for taxis, but I mean, in the case of TNCs, they have surge pricing that should scare folks. My additional fear is that TNCs have a license to discriminate, or, you know, they call it rating customers, but I mean, you know, essentially, it sounds good in theory, but in practice, I mean, it may turn out to be a form of redlining. And so this is why it's important that regulations for TNCs mirror those for taxis. To me, that's equity. But, you know, when I look at this, I think in the end, consumers foot the bill, and those in lower-income brackets are hurt the most. And I guess these are the price for progress, but, you know, for me, I have reservations about this.
Is he going to move your amendment? No. Okay. Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. We have been working, my office as well as Jacob Frye's office, has been working on this issue for the last couple of months. In that time, we've had several public hearings. We've had numerous meetings with industry experts at the licensing department. We met both the TNCs as well as the cab industry. And in terms of, and I'll let Jacob Frye basically talk on the TNC part, but in terms of Chapter 341, we have had numerous meetings with the taxi industry, taxi companies, as well as taxi drivers themselves. And what we have in front of you is the wish list of the taxi companies. They had a wish list, they brought it to us, we discussed it with our staff, and we incorporated it into 341. So now, when I hear complaints on the last minute after we've had public hearings, after everything went through the process and we passed it on the 8th of July, I'm perplexed. I don't understand how these, how they missed to add some of these changes that they want to add right now, and how these complaints that we're hearing right now were not brought forward at the time when we were having discussions for the last couple of months. In terms of discrimination, there has already been discrimination in the cab industry. There's already been discrimination with regards to some of our residents that live in North Side and live in other areas, with regards to getting accessibility to taxis. With regards to the wheelchair accessibility, that's taken out of Chapter 341. We're going to have an RFP, and we're going to have companies bid and get incentives to actually deal with our disability folks in the city of Minneapolis. So that burden, and that was a burden, that's what the taxi companies told us, that was a burden, that 10% should be taken out of the Chapter 341. We've done that, and yet we're hearing the complaints from some quarters that the taxi companies are not required while the TNCs are not required. Now, both of them are not required. In terms of the TNCs, and I will actually defend the TNCs, I think this is a new model. And what we're facing is resistance to change. Whenever there's a new advent, there's a resistance to change. Now, I think we should be wise enough to support both Chapter 341 and 343 because it came through a deliberate process. It took months. You know, Jacob Frye's office and my office have been working on this nonstop. You know, I'm kind of getting tired of taxis and TNCs right now because we've been working on it for so long. And what I would like to reiterate is that this is a product of compromise, that not everybody's going to be satisfied. There's not going to be 100% satisfaction. We know this, but this is the best deal. This is the deal that came from talking to taxi drivers themselves, the taxi drivers. We spoke to them. We spoke to the taxi company owners. We spoke to Lyft. We spoke to Uber. We spoke to the experts, and we worked hand-in-hand with our experts, our licensing department. And I'd like to thank Grant Wilson because Grant Wilson's door was open. I mean, I'm hearing some complaints, but his door was open. He was open, you know, he was supportive of new ideas, and whenever we pushed, and we pushed, and we kept pushing him, he was actually supporting us. So I would like to thank Grant Wilson. Again, I would like to thank Jacob Frye, Councilmember Frye, for his hard work, as well as Chair Goodman and the rest of our council colleagues on the CD and our committee. And I would like to also add that this is going to, you know, this is going to be a continuous process. It's going to, you know, we're still going to be able to tweak, we're still going to be able to make changes. This is not the final product, but this is the foundation. This is the foundation that we'll be able to build on and to improve. And I think Minneapolis, like Jacob Frye said earlier, Minneapolis is a city that innovates, is a city that moves ahead, is a city that advances things. And I think introducing Lyft and Uber, as well as the deregulation on the taxi industry, will improve the transportation in the city of Minneapolis, and that's why I am supporting this, and I'd like also my colleagues to support this. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to briefly voice support for both of these changes. I represent a ward where I've heard a lot from constituents who want to see ever-expanding transportation options. Their neighborhoods where people choose to live without a car or with fewer cars because of financial reasons or lifestyle reasons, all kinds of reasons, that people are choosing to want to use things other than their own personal vehicle. And every time we expand our transit system and provide even more options, we're allowing people to do that. So I've heard a lot of support from my constituents for these changes. I think that Councilmembers Frye and Worsami worked well to address the concerns of the cab industry, which I think were valid, to ensure that we're being fair with the ADA accessibility issue. I think our previous way of dealing with this was not providing very good service to folks who need ADA-accessible vehicles. And so I think this new solution will both be equitable as well as do what we need, which is to provide the results to people who need ADA-accessible vehicles. I've heard concern about the fare issues and equities around fares, and we do, I know, deal with fares annually, and I think staff is committed to continuing to review the cab fare rates. And then I've also heard concerns about insurance, and I'm comfortable with staff's commitment to continue to audit our, the way we're dealing with insurance and to continue to make sure that that is addressed. So again, I am supportive of both of these changes and really thank my colleagues for their leadership on this. Again, I've heard many times from a lot of my constituents their excitement about having more transportation options.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to express support as well for this. I want to thank the authors who have worked very hard with a lot of different groups on this. It's always hard to find that balance and strike it. And as Councilmember Worsami said, I'm sure we'll continue to revisit this and look at it and try to improve as much as we can the balance between taxis and these TNCs. I also just want to say it's very exciting to see this new market emerge through technology, and certainly we're working to catch up with these emerging technologies, as are insurance companies, as are consumers. And I'm just going to make a quick prediction here, that not in this council cycle, but in the next council cycle, we will be, or sorry, not in this council, and not in this council term, but in the next council term, we will be tackling the issue of autonomous vehicles and whether or not those can be used for public transit. I mean, they're out there in Mountain View, California, driving around. In 2017, they're going to be available to consumers, and that is something in the pipeline, and it's important for us to look forward and start thinking about that and be prepared for that so that we're able to strike that balance earlier on and that we're not reacting to these changes only after the consumers have demanded them and they've already been rolled out in areas. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Glidden.
Thank you. This is a comment about these ordinances. I have to say in response to Councilmember Andrew Johnson, I just, I'm not a big fan of personal rapid transit, so FYI. With these ordinance changes, I'm going to be supporting these today, and I wanted to flag that for everyone. This has been a difficult issue to work for in part because I do think how these new companies have entered the market. I just want to voice actually some support for Councilmember Yang's comments here. It has been very challenging to see companies enter the market illegally instead of being able to work with us as we are moving forward in ordinance. So I just want to say that's kind of a challenging environment to see how are we moving forward with this. And I just want to put that out there to Lyft and Uber. Regardless of that, we, I do think we have a responsibility as government to look when there are new models out there for providing services of a type. This is a conversation I've had with some of our state representatives as well, for us not to put barriers in front of how those models might move forward, but how to look at what is a reasonable regulation from the city and/or from other government entities to look at these new models of providing service. And so I am supporting this proposal. I do agree, though, too, that anytime you have something that's kind of out there on the frontier, there are changes that I think will come. And I think we are going to be looking at this very carefully, continuing to review insurance issues and all sorts of things, and looking for how those updates might need to be made. The other thing I want to just mention is I appreciate the work Councilmember Worsami has done to try to bring forward a number of the recommended changes from the taxi cab industry. I have said from the beginning, I think we are going to need to take a really hard look at how we are working with the taxi cab industry. They provide a fundamental, essential service, and they can't go away. We need their service, and we need to continue to work with them on how this is a business model that works. It's a highly, highly regulated industry in part because of how they provide their service, which is you are a stranger who is approaching a cab, and you kind of have that stranger-to-stranger contact, highly regulated. There are some things that I think have been discussed that I just want to say again, I'm supportive of looking at in the future, and I think some of this might even come up later this year, and one of this is the review of the fares. I think there are some significant issues that have been brought up there, in part with how we're recognizing this challenge around short fares. And I think there is a piece of that that relates to the fare structure and what economic incentive or disincentive there might be for taxi cab drivers to take short fares, and are we somehow part of perpetuating a challenging and sometimes discriminatory situation by how the economic model is not making sense? So I just want to kind of put that out there as one of the issues that I think we need to continue to confront in the future. Last, just because, as Councilmember Bender has said, we have had questions about accessibility, wheelchair accessibility. Let's just be honest, the existing system wasn't working, and we have heard this for years. I think as a city, we have committed that we need to look at what that new system would be, but had not identified what that new system would be. What we have here is a proposal for a new system for ensuring that there is access for those who need ground transportation service who are in wheelchairs and need that kind of accessibility. So this, again, this is a new model being proposed, and I am certain that it's going to continue to be reviewed as well. So thank you to those, both the authors as well as many staff members, Grant Wilson, Joel Fussie, and others, as well as members from the industry who engaged in what I know is a lot of conversation to come to this product. I know we're going to continue to review it, but I am going to support what's coming forward today.
Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I think I have four or five things that I'd just like to add to that conversation here. The first is just my appreciation for Councilmembers Frye and Worsami for taking this on. I think before you were elected, a group had approached me, and ride sharing was coming, and we knew that, and this was something that I looked at, and I thought, wow, that's going to take a lot of work, that is going to be something to move through the council. Let's wait and see if somebody else wants to take it on later. And lo and behold, you stepped up and you took it on. I also really appreciate that as you took it on, you recognized that we also have to look at what's going on on the taxi side, and without some kind of a working both of those elements, nothing will happen. And I think you took your time, you stopped, you talked, and we made a lot of progress, and I really appreciate that. The second thing I want to emphasize here is that this whole process has only reaffirmed for me my conclusion that having the city regulate this industry is no longer necessarily appropriate. We, St. Paul and Minneapolis, I believe, back in the day, used to have their separate bus services. We recognize that the transportation is a regional issue, we need regional solutions, we've created a regional body to handle our bus service. And right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge, put together where we have taxi drivers, and now the TNCs, it will probably have to make sure that they somehow are fitting Bloomington's expectations and requirements, St. Louis Parks, Adenas, Fridley, St. Paul. Taxi drivers have difficulty, if they have a Minneapolis license, actually taking a call from St. Paul or from Bloomington or using the airport. So we have these different rules and these different regulations. So now that you've had such a great success taking this on, Councilmembers Frye and Worsami, I think as you move forward, you can look at how can you create this regional entity. But I do think we have to start thinking about that, especially now that we're adding ride share. If we have a transportation network for the region, let's have it for the region and see if we can't work on it that way. I have concerns about the ordinance. I think I expressed some of them at committee of the whole. There are concerns that I already had about the taxi industry. What do we do about discrimination? What do we do about accessibility? Those are real. I think there's some efforts to address it in the amendments. I'll be curious to see what happens with the incentives for accessibility. Even though I have concerns, I do think that it's not going to be productive to delay anything at this point. I think we've done so much work and so much effort. I also think that it's too late to walk in with amendments today for me to think we can make those part of what's happening. So I think what we have to do now is move the package forward, and I really appreciate Councilmember Frye's willingness to clarify a staff direction so that everybody will know that a year after this is implemented, we're going to pause, and we're going to do a careful analysis, and we're going to look at these issues, and we're going to have data. And we're going to have data that's going to tell us about accessibility, and it's going to tell us about, is there redlining going on? Is there discrimination? What are the complaints? What's happening? And it'll give us an opportunity, I think, to say, let's tweak or adjust or make some other changes, because I'm pretty confident that even after a year, we're not going to have that ultimate regional solution that I know we're going to have to get to if our region's really going to work and really going to change with the times.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I will never forget the day that Councilmember Glidden came to my office and said, "We need to deal with this Uber-Lift thing." She was chair of the Regulatory Services Committee. It was prior to the time that we had merged into community development, and I said, "God, I wish I wasn't on this committee to deal with this, but good luck to you if you can figure it out." And a lot of people have tried to figure it out, including people from other states and people from other cities. We find ourselves in a position today to be one of the first major cities in the United States to try to figure it out. The solution might not be perfect, but the solution moves us forward. And I want to just say a few things about that. It's not our job to protect the status quo. If it was our job to protect the status quo, we would not have food trucks in this city today. Six years ago, when I authored the change to allowed food trucks, you would not have believed the objection from the restaurant industry, individual restaurants themselves, the Building Owners and Managers Association, the people who currently control the right-of-way on the street, and the people that wanted to control the right-of-way on the street. All of the drama about, "We're not being treated equally, they don't have to pay property taxes, they're not paying as high an inspection fee." And our point of view was, we're not going to treat them equally. They are something completely different. We're going to regulate them, as we are with Lyft. We're going to charge them a fee, as we are with Lyft, and we're going to let this new model operate. And in the end, the world didn't come to an end. There are almost 100 food trucks all over downtown, and there have been three or four restaurants that haven't made it. So in the end, we need to figure out how to promote change in a really positive way and deal with progress. And that's why I so admire Councilmembers Worszami and Frye. I think there's something we can feel here that has to do with a generational change on the council. People like me, who are not super high-tech, I just got a smartphone a couple of years ago, I've never used an app to call anything. I've got a neighbor who drives a taxi, and I call him on his phone if I need a ride. I don't use apps like that. But I understand that that is progress. And for us to move into this next era of time, we need to figure out how to fairly allow process in our city and progress in our city. And I think Councilmembers Frye and Worszami have done an amazing job of this. This change is difficult, and I understand that it isn't always going to be equal. But as long as we can be fair and allow progress to move forward, we've done our jobs. I congratulate you, my colleagues. This is a very sticky issue to deal with. I would say of everything we've dealt with this year, it's probably been one of the most difficult, it's taken amongst the most time, it's involved amongst the most stakeholders, and I think you've both done a really brilliant job of trying to follow a legitimate process and move us towards change. And I'm very strongly supporting both movements today.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Anytime you make progress, I do also think it's important to bring those who may not initially agree with you along. And in doing so, I would like to perhaps alleviate some of the concerns from Councilmember Yang. Well, first off, I do agree with you, Councilmember Yang, the way that both Uber and Lyft came to the city initially is not necessarily the way that other businesses or their business should have done it in the first place. I'm not necessarily psyched about that. But I will address all the other remaining issues. First off is fairness. I've found through this that there is a difference between equity and fairness. Equity implies the same thing. Fairness implies that there may be differences between perhaps the business model, so it's necessary to regulate differently. In this case, it is the difference between a private-facing model, a private model and a public-facing model. The cab industry is, in its very essence, a public-facing model. The driver doesn't know the rider, the rider doesn't know the driver, they don't have the information beforehand, you don't know what price there's going to be at the very end. Now, the TNC model is by its very nature private-facing. You sign up beforehand, you give your credit card information beforehand, the driver knows the rider, the rider knows the driver. And with that, yes, there is at times the need for different kinds of regulations. Furthermore, if it really is the same business model, even if that is true, it really is the same business model, and the TNC ordinance is so much more favorable, as Councilmember Yang said, then why don't the taxis just operate under the TNC model? Seems reasonable to me. Next thing, the fee structures and the fluctuating fares. And I'm specifically going to talk about the surge pricing here. This is another instance where there's a difference between the model. With the TNCs, you sign up beforehand, you know what you're getting into beforehand. You've got the regular rate, and if there's surge pricing, if there is surge pricing, they specify what, or they will be specifying through this ordinance exactly what the price will be. So if it's going to be a little bit higher at bar close, for instance, you know exactly what you're getting into. Next piece is the licensing. The cab companies are regulated differently, in this case, for one prime reason. Cab companies, they have independent contractors. Each one of the drivers, they drive for themselves as part of a greater company. Most of the burden is on the individual driver. On the TNC model, the burden is on the company itself. So when each individual driver on the cab side signs up, yes, they do pay for the licensing fee, and that licensing fee is necessary because we have an administrative cost for the city associated with it. On the TNC side, we also have an administrative cost, but it's bore by the company itself. Councilmember Yang recognized that there's a $35,000 fee for the TNC companies, and I believe he thought it should be higher. We're not allowed to do that legally. We can't do that legally because we can only charge, as a city, the amount that it costs to deal with administering the service, which in this case would be the licensing. The next piece is the disability part, and that's one of, I think, the big successes of looking at an ordinance. The taxicab ordinance really hadn't been revamped since like the 1980s, which is when I was born. And with that, yeah, by looking at this again, there were some things that needed to be changed. The previous model required that 10% of the taxicab vehicles be ADA accessible. They weren't coming anywhere close to meeting that. I mean, basically, what was happening was, you know, they throw a piece of plywood up on the side of the cars, throw some duct tape on there, and call it a day. Now, in the cab industry's defense, outfitting a vehicle with full ADA accessibility is very, very expensive. And the taxicab company came to me back in February or March or so, and they said, hey, you know, we really need to revisit this. And I do agree with them here, we did need to revisit it. So what we've done is every single company, whether they be TNCs or cabs, need to put into a fund. That fund will then go to paying for the licensing fees of a couple of companies, whether they be cab companies or TNC companies, that will handle the dispatch and full ADA accessible service. So next time around, if you're an individual with disabilities and you need transportation, you call one number, and you will get service that is fully ADA accessible. Not kind of fully ADA accessible, and we already have four or five different companies that are chomping at the bit to have that sort of market occupation. Next piece is the impact on low-income people. I don't usually take a taxicab because they're pretty expensive. I also probably won't take a TNC on a regular basis because they're also more expensive. I would prefer to ride my bicycle or walk. So we can't say that, you know, one of them is somehow infringing on those who have less income while the others aren't. It is true, and I will acknowledge this, it is true that the TNCs do require a smartphone to use. And it is also true that smartphones are used more often by younger people. But businesses, all businesses, will target certain demographics. And if we're going to outlaw TNCs because they target young people, we might as well also outlaw nightclubs, slap bracelets, and Jucky Jesus because they also target young people. Not to mention, and I've made this joke before, one of our own council members doesn't yet have an iPhone, and I'm told, though, that you're in the process of getting one from your son or something. And then the final piece is discrimination. We live in a society that is discriminatory, and it is our job as government to protect against that. We have laws that are in place right now that do not let cab companies or any other company racially profile, but it still happens. It still happens. We will set an inspector up over on Hennepin Avenue, and oftentimes, the cab will drive right by the black couple and go pick up the white couple. That's not okay. That's not okay if it's a cab company, and it's not okay if it's a TNC company. And we will have regulations in place to make sure that that doesn't happen, and we will have audit capability as well. And if, for instance, a TNC company is refusing to provide rides to, let's say, North Minneapolis, we're going to be on their backs pretty hard, I guarantee it. That being said, I do think this is the time to embrace innovation. I appreciate the support of the rest of the council in passing this ordinance. It is progress. Will it be the, is it the be-all, end-all? No, absolutely not. As Councilmember Johnson mentioned, we may have automated cars, we may have flying cars in, I don't know, probably once I'm dead. But we need to take that big step forward. We need to lead the way. We can't shy away from progress simply because a few other cities haven't done it yet. Minneapolis is a great city, and Minneapolis can lead damn well.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, to Councilmember Frye's points about why don't the taxicabs operate in the TNC model, and, you know, what if this actually becomes a reality? I mean, if it does become a reality, then this will eliminate the taxicab business as we know it, and thereby eliminating the central public service referred to by Vice President Glidden. And so we should be a little bit careful about what we wish for. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Nay.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and one nay.
That ordinance, or those ordinances, pass. Did you want Councilmember Frye to have something in front of us for a staff direction?
Thank you, Madam President. Yes, I have a staff.
We voted on them already. Pardon me, Councilmember Frye, excuse me. You wanted to move the staff direction?
Yes, yes, I have a staff direction, Madam President.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I move to direct staff to come back to the CD NRS Committee one year from the effective dates for changes to the Chapter 343 and 341 of the code with a review and recommendation of both ordinances.
Councilmember Frye has moved a staff direction. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Thank you. Next, we'll go on to health, energy, excuse me, health, environment, and community engagement with that committee's chair, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing four items forward for approval. The first is appointments and reappointments to the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission for two-year terms. Council appointments of David Safran, Eric Gustafson, and Brittany Lewis, and a mayoral appointment of Ishmael Israel. The second is passage of an ordinance relating to the keeping of honeybees. I will be moving a substitute motion. The third item is authorizing execution of annual agreements having to do with our school-based clinic college work-study program. And the fourth is accepting the list of eligible providers for our Healthy Home Services through the Health Department. I will move items one, three, and four, and would like to move a substitute for item two.
Councilmember Gordon has moved items one, three, and four. And then item two, he does have substitute, which is really a very minor change. Councilmember Gordon, why don't you point that out?
Okay. It should be before you with a brief title page, and then if you open it, and there's actually only four words that are going to be deleted. There seemed to be some confusion after this passed the committee, what these words actually referred to and meant. The words are "and/or" annual notification. This is on the second page of the ordinance language, and they're highlighted in yellow. There seemed to be confusion whether this is notification to the city or to nearby neighbors, and it was clear that the intent of the author and what the committee passed, we weren't expecting annual notification of the neighborhoods, and there is an annual renewal with the city. So I'm moving to strike the language for clarity.
Okay. I think this just is an amendment, then. So, and as chair, you're bringing in amended.
All right, I'll move it as amended, then?
Yep, yep, okay. Any discussion, then, on the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee report? Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak in favor of the chair's, committee chair's amendment and clarify, again, that these three words are clearing up some confusion. We had not intended to require annual notification of neighbors. We do have a provision in the ordinance that now is a new thing that requires posting of notification in rental properties so that renters will have that notice posted in their buildings. And then we do have an annual renewal of the permit without a fee to the city so that the city will continue to know where honeybee hives are located within the city. So we've worked closely with staff and beekeepers to make sure that this ordinance addresses, you know, the need for neighbors to know what's happening nearby them, but also, you know, that it's based on the facts about honeybees, which is that they're really very not aggressive insects. They are very unlikely to sting unless someone is standing directly in front of their hive. And we have a lot of regulations within the existing ordinance which are not changing, which are providing safety provisions for the hives. So, and again, this is coming forward because bees are in danger. So this is a small way that we, as a city, can make it easier for people who are keeping bees, which are an important part of our food system. So I'm excited to see these changes go forward.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll on the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement report.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. Did we skip over IGR?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep, excuse me. Sorry. Next item, then, is the Intergovernmental Relations Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Glidden. Sorry.
And thank you, Madam Chair. Just one item, it is local approval of special legislation regarding automated property systems, and I'll move approval.
Okay. Councilmember Glidden has moved the Intergovernmental Relations Report with local approval of special legislation. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, I just really want to briefly comment on this. This is a big deal in some of the concerns that have occurred over scrap metal across our city, requiring much stronger identification and procedures to put some of these materials, the identification of the person that is scrapping them, into the automated pawn system for tracking. And so some of the things we've heard about over the years, cemetery vases, public sculpture, all that sort of thing, and there'll be much more stringent rules and identification ability for those items being scrapped. So I'm really grateful to the legislature for their help on this. Clerk, call the roll on the Intergovernmental Relations Report.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Now we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item to move for approval today. That is one to confirm mayoral appointments of Amy Bergquist, Thomas Gallagher, Mitra Nelson, Christine Peters, Michael Farr, and the reappointment of Wendy Adler-Robinson to approve city council appointment of Elizabeth Loeb, and to make technical corrections to term appointments for Arlene Santiago, Lonnie Nichols, Leban Abdou Kadir, Edris Altomirano, Laura Baldwin, Rian Vaiken, and Donald Joseph. And with that, I will move the item for approval.
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to discuss that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worszami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Now we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have one item to move for approval today. That is one to confirm mayoral appointments of Amy Bergquist, Thomas Gallagher, Mitra Nelson, Christine Peters, Michael Farr, and the reappointment of Wendy Adler-Robinson
Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Anyone want to discuss that item? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. Transportation and Public Works Committee forwards 11 items today. Item one is a special boulevard permit for Nice Ride, Minnesota, to approve the special permit application for Nice Ride, Minnesota, to pave the boulevard at the northwest corner of 11th Avenue South and Second Street South at Gold Medal Park. Item two is to approve the special boulevard permit application for the Mill Quarter Ramp to pave a portion of the boulevard at 711 Second Street South. Item three is the sodium hydroxide feed and storage system construction. And that's to authorize Minnesota Builders Incorporated the amount of $65,000 for change order number one. No additional appropriation is required. Item four is the Orange Line BRT project, passage resolution supporting development and implementation of the Orange Line Bus Rapid Transit System on I-35W from Burnsville to downtown Minneapolis. The following items refer to reports to Ways and Means Committee. Item five is the 2014 alley resurfacing, and that'll include a passage resolution ordering the work to proceed and adopting special assessments for the project, and passage resolution requesting the Board of Estimates and Taxation to authorize the city to issue a sale of assessment bonds for the project. And there was an amendment passed out to everyone that has been distributed, and that amendment indicates the deletion from the list of the alleys to resurface of the alley located between 29th Avenue South and 30th Avenue South from 40th Street East to 39th Street East, and that that's special assessments and bond sale be reduced accordingly to reflect the reduced number of alleys to resurface in 2014. Staff will further investigate the alley's needs for resurfacing. Item six, the Cedar Sidewalk Modification Project is moving forward with a passage resolution ordering the work to proceed and adopting special assessments, a resolution requesting the Board of Estimates and Taxation to authorize the city to issue sale assessment bonds for that project, and a passage resolution ordering the abandonment and removal of airways located in the public right-of-way that are in conflict with the project. Item seven is the Central Avenue D-Tour Agreement with MinDOT, and that is to allow, authorize execution agreement to allow for a D-Tour route on Johnson Street during that project. Item eight is the Nicklet Central Modern Streetcar Project, authorize execution of contract with nonassociates to provide project management and public outreach for that line in the amount not to exceed $125,000 through June 30th, 2015. Item nine is the Seventh Street Ramp Project, authorize acceptance of the TED program grant funds in the amount of $6,790,000 for the Seventh Street Ramp. Passage resolution amending the capital budget to establish the project and increase the appropriation to reflect those funds, and authorize execution of the contract with SRF Consulting Group Incorporated to provide professional services to manage that project, do the community outreach, and final design for the project, and approve the project layout. Item 10 is the Automatic Vehicle Location Pilot Program, and authorize an execution for that program with Asset Works for the use of automatic vehicle locations, services in city-owned vehicles. Item 11 is an acceptance of a low bid with Wetland Habitat Restoration for the estimated expenditure of $385,000 for the Stormwater Specialty Vegetation Management, and I will move approval of all items with the noted amendment on item five.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report with item five separate in front of you, change deleting a project. Any discussion on that motion or on the report? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. There are six items on the Ways and Means Report for your consideration. Item number one is a series of legal settlements. Second item is accepting a low bid with Ebert Inc. for the Traffic Maintenance Building Renovation Project bid. Third item is the acceptance of a low bid from Convergent Technologies for the citywide camera surveillance system bid. The fourth item is the termination of a Starboard Consulting Contract and execution of a contract with EMA for the Maximo Asset Management Software Implementation. Fifth item is related to the Human Resource Information System upgrade contracts with Sierra Systems Group. And the final item is our two position, new position appointments in the Human Resources Department. I'm happy to move all six items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. There are six items on the Ways and Means Report for your consideration. Item number one is a series of legal settlements. Second item is accepting a low bid with Ebert Inc. for the Traffic Maintenance Building Renovation Project bid. Third item is the acceptance of a low bid from Convergent Technologies for the citywide camera surveillance system bid. The fourth item is the termination of a Starboard Consulting Contract and execution of a contract with EMA for the Maximo Asset Management Software Implementation. Fifth item is related to the Human Resource Information System upgrade contracts with Sierra Systems Group. And the final item is our two position, new position appointments in the Human Resources Department. I'm happy to move all six items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Zoning and Planning Report with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have four items to forward from zoning and planning. The first is regarding the donation collection bins, as passage of an ordinance amending Title 20, Chapter 537 of the Minneapolis Code of Ordinances, to allow donation bins to be operated by for-profit entities as an accessory use. The second item is for Village Market, to approve applications on behalf of Omar Sabri for the following rezoning and vacation, to allow for expansion of an existing surface parking lot, by passing an ordinance amending the zoning code to rezone the property at 2218 10th Avenue South to add a TP transitional parking overlay district to an existing R2B district, and resolution vacating part of the alley partly dedicated in Block 2 Chicago Avenue, 2nd Edition, and partly deeded and 7th Edition bounded by 10th Avenue South, Elliott Avenue South, and 24th Street East. The third item is for the Friendship Store, to approve applications for an alley vacation and two rezonings to allow for a new two-story or 35-foot-tall, approximately 21,295 square foot grocery store, by passage of the following, a resolution vacating part of the alley in Block 1 Wolverton 2nd Edition to Minneapolis, to amend the ordinance of the zoning code to rezone several properties from R1A to C1, and to amend the zoning code to rezone the properties at 3817, 3821, and 3825 3rd Avenue South to add TP transitional overlay district, parking district, to the underlying R1A district. The fourth is for DC Group expansion at 1977 West River Road to approve an application to vacate part of Block 20, Block 37, 1977 West River Road, to allow for the construction of an office or warehouse addition, a passage of the resolution vacating a portion of the alley. Now, forward all of those items.
Councilmember Bender has moved the zoning and planning report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Glidden.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Fry.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.